Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to call to order the Bamberg County School District Board of Trustees meeting to order. Today is Monday, November 6, 2023, and the time is 6:00 PM. All board members are present with the exception of Ms. Thompson, and I believe that she may not be able to make it this evening. She may be under the weather. We'll see if she feels well enough to join us. Next on the agenda you have in front of you is item number two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance in Moment of Silence. Board members, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we will adjourn in a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Board members, you've had an opportunity to receive and review the agenda prior to tonight's meeting. What's the pleasure of the board with regards to approval of the agenda?
Madam Chairman, I approve the agenda as the agenda for tonight, November 6.
All right. We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. We are down to item number four, which is approval of the minutes for October 2, 2023. And board members, you have had an opportunity to receive and review these meeting minutes prior to tonight's meeting. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to approval of these minutes?
Madam Chair, this time I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for October 2, 2023 after review.
Okay. Motion on the floor?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We are down to item number five on the agenda, which is school reports. And first up, we have Mandy Edwards with Richard Carroll Elementary School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are down with our enrollment for September 1. We are also down on referrals. As you can see, I'm over our calendar events. But as far as our report for our data analysis, we received a score of average for 2022, 2023. Some of our strengths include the number of students that met expectations above the state average in ELA and math. In science on SC Ready, the number of students that meets expectations again is also above the state level. And we also increased 7.7% from last school year. Our first and second grade students are on track for math and ELA as well. Areas of achievement, while we're improving in science, we still have a long ways to go in science. And just overall academic performance in math and ELA as well, with a decrease in that achievement gap. And then, one of our biggest goals is improving school climate. That is one of the things that's been known at RCS this school year. The teacher's perception of work conditions, working conditions, the student perceptions of social and physical environment, and then student perceptions of safety, those are really low on our report card this year. As far as action steps that we're taking, we're looking at tier-one instruction, standards-based instruction, curriculum development, common assessments in all areas. And then again, just fostering those positive relationships, building a sense of community, making the students feel that they have a self unwelcome environment at RCS, and then just setting those clear rules, procedures, expectations for students. And just being very consistent. So those are just some of our action steps that we're planning to improve this report card for next school year. And I hope you all also have a copy of our school report card. Any questions for me?
Well, I'm very sorry. It says, "For today's students to meet meeting annual targets, maybe we do a road project because the meeting is real called Jersey Games, just in order to have them to evolve." I don't know what that means. I'm sorry. Maybe tonight's a lot of good night to find out, my friend.
I'm going to go into that through my presentation.
Thank you.
I'm going to show you're going to go into that, all of that, all of these reports when you're... Okay. All right. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Edwards?
I think that's a question, but I would be impressed with the carnival that the PTO had at the elementary school. They should be very successful.
And I don't know if that was also successful. I say nice. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Denise Miller with Bamberg Airheart Middle School.
Greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
So you have your school report, you see our school enrollment and our discipline for the month of October. We had Mr. Cal A. Green come and speak to our students on September 27. He brought a message of inspiration and encouraged the students to find their purpose. The quarter ended on September 29. We had intercession October 3 through the 4 with about 80% attendance of the students who were notified. Then we had another motivational speaker on October 9. This is Master Deputy Wesley Thomas. He is from our VEH class of 2006, and I thank Sheriff Leon a lot for allowing him to come and speak to our kids and encouraging them as well. We gave our Mastery Connect benchmark assessments in ELA, math, science, and social studies over the course of two weeks. We issued report cards on October 16. We administered the PSAT on October 18. We had our homecoming on October 19. And you can see where Ms. Gabrielle Wade in eighth grade was crowned Ms. Homecoming. And first runner-up is Ms. Jordan Johnson. Second runner-up was Ms. Demire Dickerson. All of them were in eighth grade as well, and I put a picture of them with their parents. We had school picture day on October 24. And all of our students participated in the South Carolina Department of Education's Virtual Youth Anti-Bully Forum that was held on October 25. It was online, and each classroom piped in via their interactive whiteboard, and the topic was "Wait, Am I the Bully?" We had an earthquake drill on October 27. And I want to get to our school report card data. The first few pages, I just gave you an overview, and then I provided the next page, page four, was an overview of our academic achievement. Page five was an overview of student progress. Page six was student progress by subgroups. Page seven was an overview of our school climate. And I wanted you to have the overview, but then I gave you a breakdown, and I'll go over that with you. All right. So, I'm excited to tell you that BEMS earned an excellent on our school report card. That means that our school performance substantially exceeds the criteria to ensure all students meet the profile of the South Carolina graduate. And here are some lows, some things that went really well for us. Our school report card improved 10 points from 17 last year. This was our second year of receiving an excellent on our school report card. We no longer have an ATSI designation. Our ELA scores improved from 33.1% in 2022 to 48.6% in 2023. Our math scores improved from 32.6 in 2022, 35.5 in 2023. Our student progress is above the state average. Our African-American students earned 79.4% progress points compared to the state's 48.8. Our disabled students earned 56.8% progress points compared to the state's 44.6%. Our economically disadvantaged students earned 75.7% progress points compared to the state's 48.5%. And the lowest performance subgroup, which will be your lowest 20%, is growing faster than the state average. Our school climate was above the state average. Ways that we can grow, we can get better. We want to improve our academic performance from average to good. We want to increase our student progress from good to excellent. We want to increase our school climate from good to excellent. We want to decrease the gap in academic performance compared to the state, and we want to increase the number of disabled students scoring meets and exceeds. And this is what we're doing. We have common planning, which allows collaboration within our departments. We have been refining our ELA and math curriculums. We implemented Mastery Connect for our benchmarks and unit assessments. We have targeted professional development. We purposely analyze our data, and then we have Ms. Amy Stenbridge leading up our ELA department, and Ms. Lana Harley leading our math department. My staff and I, we got together, we went over this data, and we set some goals, and I want to share those goals with you. By 2024, our school wants to increase the percentage of students scoring meets and exceeds on the ELA and math sections of SC Ready, and we want to close the achievement gap as compared with the state. By 2024, we would like to earn a Commonwealth Gold or Silver Award as established by the Education Accountability Act of 1998. And by 2028, we want to consistently rate good or excellent as measured by the South Carolina School Report Card.
Now hold on. Mary?
May I just say that I was so pleased when I saw that 80% of the students that were notified to come to the intercession did attend. You got your pilot a little hard work on your parts.
A little bit along the way. Yes, ma'am, every morning.
Congratulations. You got some great amount of kids to come.
I just want to thank our staff for all their hard work, everyone, all of you, talk around, Mr. Homer, say thank you for supporting us.
Thank you.
I would like to recognize Bamberg Airheart Middle School because not only did they achieve a rating of excellence in 2023, this is the second year in a row Bamberg Airheart Middle School has received a rating of excellence on its report. It's always not kidding when they have climbed out of the depths of some places that none of us want to be. They've worked hard for the last three years now to get out of those ratings and to achieve this rating. They take their Mastery Connect benchmark assessments very seriously. They take their students' academic performance on math testing and South Carolina Ready testing very seriously. And they do sit down and as a team, work on their goals, work with the community, work with parents, and set unified goals so that everybody's working towards a common goal. And their efforts is paying off, as is evidenced by their report cards.
Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Miller. Appreciate all that you're doing.
Next up, we have Jordan Smith with Bamberg Airheart High School.
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
We bring you greetings from Bamberg Airheart High School. Our enrollment is 357, game one since October. Overall, rating on our school report card is 57, and I've included that scale so you can see how that relates to high school. We're two points away from a good, and we have, talking with the staff, we will get that next year, we're confident. We've identified a few areas of concern. In the category of preparing for success, which includes biology and U.S. history, our scores are fairly low there, but they're climbing. Couple of things that we're doing differently to try to get those scores up. We have established a school leadership team, and we are conducting individual administrative conferences with each student. And that's in the areas of biology and U.S. history. We have a school-wide goal that we're still trying to agree on, we have 7:30 meeting tomorrow morning, that we're going to agree on for progress, not just for U.S. history and biology, but also for English II and Algebra I, all of our EOC testing areas. And if we achieve that school-wide goal, we want it attainable, a decent report team, we're going to have, we're going to incentivize the students to make the progress, and that is going to be a school-wide celebration. And I know you think at the high school level, these kids want, they want something to work towards, and I want them to feel that sense of accomplishment. On the administrative side, I have self-enrolled into a micro credential in MTSS to become a stronger data leader. We are implementing more Mastery Connect training for our teachers so that we can too do a better job of using the benchmark data to improve instruction. An area of strength, we are averaging academic achievement, which includes English II and Algebra I. And I would like to say our English II had a 10-point increase from last year to 55.6 this year. And then our Algebra I has had a 46.3%, but it is above the state average of 41.8. So very proud of where we are. Two more points, and we'll be in that category of good, and we're very confident that we'll be able to reach that.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you so much. Next up, we have Rhonda Ray with Denmark Olar Elementary School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The current enrollment at Denmark Olar Elementary is 245 students. Behavior is down from the last sport meeting. With our fall intercession, we did have 72 students who attended both days, and we were pleased with the students who came. They worked really hard, they focused, and did as much activities as they could with their teachers. We completed our first administration of Mastery Connect, and we have met with teachers with the data, trying to see, you know, how did the data compare with the fall administration of math testing. With our school mission and vision, we have updated the mission and vision to make sure that it is in line with the district's mission and vision. And then also, I want to commend our teachers for the work that they're doing on our school renewal plans. We have the draft that will be due on November 14, so next week. So I do commend our teachers. We met in groups, teams, committees, and they gave a lot of good feedback based on the data, where we want and need our school to be. With the school report card, our overall rating is 40 out of 100. We were two points away from beating the average. Strengths for our school report card includes, we did increase in percentages of met or exceeding in both ELA and math, even though the percentages are still low. In 2022 for ELA, we had 15.6. For 2023, we increased to 25%. In math, we also had 15.6 in 2022. We slightly increased, but still increased in 2023 to 19.1%. So we do see those increases, although small, yet increases in a strength. Another strength in the area of student progress, we were slightly higher than the state for our school. It was 53.2, and the state was 51.2. So we take pride in the fact that we are making progress with our students when we look at students at our school compared to students throughout the state. Also, with the lowest performing, 20% of students at Denmark Olar Elementary, 58.9%, and the state was 51.2%. Opportunities for growth include making sure that we increase, of course, in all areas, but particularly with our academic achievement, we do need to make sure that one of the areas that we focus on, will focus on is science. We only had 16.3% to score met or exceeding, so we know that science is one of our weak areas. Also, out of ELA and math, math is our lowest area out of those two subjects. Also, we want to increase our percentages in the areas of school climate. So we're looking at the results from the survey to see what areas we can really focus on so that we can make improvements. And in the four different areas for the elementary report card are the academic achievement, preparing works, it says, student progress, and school climate. So we're looking to work towards the following action steps and strategies to continue and focus on improving tier-one instruction so that all students are receiving standards-based instruction by our teachers, data meetings, ongoing PD sessions such as evidence-based interventions. There was a PD session earlier this month, excuse me, in October for our teachers with evidence-based interventions, going through our MTSS process this school year, continuing with letters training. We're in year two, and year two is focusing on vocabulary comprehension, reading and writing connection, and then also utilizing the opportunities in the after-school program. All of our teachers are taught by their regular classroom teachers, so utilizing that time to extend the learning, making sure that they have standards-based instruction when they're with the teachers. Also utilizing the intercession rates again in spring to meet the needs of our students. Any questions?
Can I ask a question? This is, it's on the page that those students take, but it's about how to have these problems on. No, students with in-school suspensions, zero, but students without in-school suspensions, 58. Are you going to correct that?
You already did that correctly. And actually, we already have something in place. Last year, we did not have in-school suspension. This year, we do. So we know that that's going to be one of the strategies in addition to other strategies, working with our guidance counselor, working with our teachers, with SCL programs, et cetera. But I do believe that the in-school suspension that we have in place this year, that we did not have last year, will help with that. Okay. Thank you. A good question.
Any other questions? Okay. Next up, we have Patricia Goldsmith with Denmark Olar Middle School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our enrollment has remained steady at 145 students. Sixth grade, we have 43; seventh grade, 55; and eighth grade, 47. Our discipline, according to Power School as of November 1, is down from where it was the previous month. Saw a rise in our bus incidents, and that was the bus that there was transition with the aid being on the bus. And so we expect to see a decline in that because that bus didn't have an aid, but that bus now has an aid. To give a summary of our report card, we, our state report card is not where we would like for it to be. However, there was a slight increase in the ELA scores from 21.1% to 22.3%, and in math from 5.7 to 5.8. We had an improvement in school climate that shifted from unsatisfactory to average, which is very good because it signifies that the environment is growing for our students. And so if the climate can grow, certainly the academics will be following. Our gains, we did have gains, but they were not substantial enough to move the needle of the report card to move us from the category from which we were in, which is below average. And additionally, we had an extension of prime instruction time for students. ELA scores improved in sixth and eighth grade, but experienced a slight decline in seventh grade. And math scores decreased in sixth and seventh grade, but showed improvement in eighth grade. And sixth grade saw a significant decline in science compared to the previous year, and so math and science will be our, is our focus. The decline in our core areas were attributed to a shortage of teachers that we had been able to implement the educational pedagogy that impacted the students. But moving forward, we are making a concerted effort, typically best practices and strategies. We're providing targeted support. We are looking at our data more closely. Students will test in math next week, and so we just came out of a meeting today with our school approval council where we had some parents to come to discuss our strategies for improvement tomorrow. We will continue with our strategic planning meeting after school if you all, if you all would like to come back. We'll be in there from 3 to about 4:30, going through our strategies. And we are working with our MTSS consultant to assist us in best strategies. We are looking at improving engagement for students so that students are doing more thinking and teachers are serving more as facilitators inside of the class as opposed to them just lecturing the whole time for middle school students. So we're looking at our math scores, benchmarks, state test scores, classroom assessments, IEPs, and 504 goals to drive student progress. And so our action plan that's going to be in place for our strategic plan involves intensifying classroom and homework reading, redefining student assignments to enhance practice and reinforcement, and interventions will be developed through tier-one instruction, which means tier-one is just good teaching practices for students. And so the process for our MTSS is in our early stages. However, we are committed to making our students more accountable and responsible for their learning and allowing our teachers once again to be facilitators of the learning as opposed to the students not having a head in the learning. You have any questions?
Anyone?
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Yanni Simmons with Denmark Olar High School.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
As always, it's good to see you. It's been a while. Just be back and share a couple of the highlights of Denmark Olar. Current enrollment as of January, you know, November 1, I'm in January already. November 1 is 185. Our discipline is up a little bit last month primarily because of tardies. Tardies is one of the things that's making its way to power schools, so those tardies when kids are late to school have started to add up. So that's how we get to the number we have. Not a major offense, but we're working through that. I want to share, we at the bottom, you see a column of events, various things that are going to be going on throughout the month of November. And if you're above of the page two, the document you receive, that's where we have our school report card data. And we start by saying that our overall rating was below average, that's a score of 45 out of 100. I want to say that the school's overall rating is comprised of five components, and a lot of times we hear the score, and we just hear the score and not sure where it came from. So I wanted to just kind of share that with you. The two, the five components are as follows. They fall under academic components and a school environment component. The academic achievement area is one of the components that is comprised of Algebra I and English II, students who score a grade of 70 or better. Preparing for success is U.S. history and biology, that too is students who score a grade of 70 or better on the state end-of-course exam. Graduation rate is another one of the components that impacts our overall school rating. College and career readiness, which is comprised of students who are completers in career and technology education programs, kids who make a certain score, 31 or better on ASVAB, students who make, it was 20 on ACT, and a 10/20 on SAT, kids who complete a work-based learning program, kids who score 7 or better on at least two dual enrollment classes. Those are just some areas that fall under the college and career readiness component. And then the school environment component is simply school climate, which is student, teacher, parent authority, and surveys that are completed annually just to get a feel or perception of what kids, teachers, as well as parents and guardians think about what's going on at their particular school. Based upon our report card, our areas of strength, I'm happy to say that we improved in social studies. That's been a growing trend that had been something that we've seen at Denmark Olar, so we're excited to see that there was an 8% increase from 2022 to 2023. to twenty-twenty-three historically across the state. That's been one of the lowest areas for schools across the state, not just Denmark Ole. So I was really excited to see that considering we have one of our more veteran teachers who's teaching that course, and she's putting in a lot of hard work with that. So I certainly want to thank Miss Fields for her effort, and we're excited to see that happen. Graduation rate was at eighty-five point seven percent. That's a seven percent increase from the previous year of twenty-twenty-two. That's significant to me primarily because the group that graduated last year is the group that were freshmen when the pandemic came. And what we saw across the state was a lot of kids dropped out of school during the time of pandemic. So we feel very fortunate and blessed to have been able to hold on to the majority of our students and help them through what we believe has been one of the most challenging times that they've ever experienced. So we're excited to see that the graduation rate has improved, and it also exceeds the state's graduation rate. School climate improved from average last school year to excellent for twenty-twenty-three. So that's a significant improvement, and what that says to us as a school, that parents, students, and teachers are pleased with what we're doing. They're confident and comfortable in sending their kids to our school because they feel that the school is safe, that there's organization, their perception of the things that are going on is all positive. So that's, that's a plus for us. Career, college and career readiness is another area that we're excited about and we think is one of our areas of strength because, one, our dual enrollment students, that number of students who enroll continues to increase each year. We actually have five students this year who will receive their associate's degree before they get their high school diploma.
That's great.
So we're really excited about that particular area, and those are some strengths that we have seen thus far. Opportunities for growth, what used to be the artist formerly known as challenges or struggles, opportunities for growth. We've seen those, and those are there in Algebra One, English Two, and Biology. We were really somewhat taken aback when we, when the scores started to come in because we, we thought we would do a whole lot better, and obviously that didn't happen. So our focus has been on how do we improve those particular areas. And teachers, I believe, are working very hard, harder than they did last year to try to improve in these areas. And one of the things that we've seen is that math and science seems like not just in this district, but in neighboring districts seem to be a challenge as well. So hopefully between our school and some surroundings, which we put our heads together and perfectly come up with a plan that will help improve kids in all of these areas. And obviously, the goal is to improve every area of our report card because every area of our report card, we get points or credits for, and our goal is to go from below average to good. We're trying to move forward. So our goal is to try to improve in every area. Just a few improvement strategies, a lot of what I'm saying, some of my colleagues have already said, MTSS Mastery Connect. We obviously have the After-School Tutor in Peace, which uses math, evidence-based instruction. One of the things that will be new to us this year is Parent University. One of the things that we have identified is that a lot of times, well, this phrase is, it takes a village to raise a child. It also takes a village to educate a child. So our goal with having a parent university is to teach and share with parents strategies, ideas, practices that might help them to help their children not only be successful as people, but be successful in school. So that will be beginning in January, Parent University, afford the parents an opportunity to come in and have us teach and share information to those persons who will come. Obviously, we had the intercession. We've had a few professional development sessions and more, our plan, evidence-based interventions, data analysis, want to teach teachers how to increase the rigor in their classroom because one of the things that I require as principal of the school, any assign, any assignment, any lesson, they have to submit along with the lesson plan, the test or exam that goes with the assessment, and we get a chance to look at it to make sure that the assessment lines up with that which has been taught. And that's been a challenge for teachers to, to learn how to be rigorous enough without just being hard, to know how to fill the gaps. So that's training that we anticipate having in the coming semester to make sure that we're on top of that. Obviously, developing teacher-made assessments, we've got to make sure that persons can do that and do it well. And also, we're looking at how to properly use the math data to inform instruction. Do you have any questions? I will answer them this time.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Simmons.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, next up is number six on the agenda, which is the executive report by Robert Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to thank y'all for the arrangement, the consent, and the sports show, our family last week, and I really appreciate it. Our fall season is pretty much wrapped up. We still have two teams participating in the playoffs, cross-country, boys and girls. We're in the state qualifier last Saturday. Both teams qualified, and they will run in the state meet this Saturday in Newberry. And Van Buren's football team is hosting East Carolina in the second round of the playoffs Friday night. We had three other teams make the playoffs. Denmark's football team and Van Buren's volleyball team made it into the first round, and Van Buren's tennis team made it to the second round. And I left the basketball schedules and the sheet for the all-region and teams that made All-Star games on there. I would like to recognize the athletes who made it to the All-Star game. Amelia Stenbridge has played in the North-South volleyball game. That's November the eighteenth at Brooklyn KC. Jamie Downing and Anthony Williams played in the North-South football game at Merle Beach on December the ninth. And the Border Bowl, which is held in Augusta, will be, it's usually like the first or second Saturday in January, and it's Jamie Downing, Anthony Williams, Isaiah Johnson, Nick Folk, and Zari Washington. Have any questions? I'll introduce them next, next meeting, because we have a new girls and boys coach, Ken Van Buren, boys coach Willie Carter, and girls coach Candace Jones.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
The next up is item number seven, which is Student Staff Recognition and Superintendent's Report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Brown.
Could you hear me again? Lots of information tonight. Are you with me? I got more to give you. All right, before I get started, I would like to say, you know, we're going over school report cards tonight, and I'm about to introduce you to the districts. You know, each school gets a report card and sends it to the district. So I heard from all the principals about the individual school reports, and now I'm going to do a brief summary of the district's overall profile. Please keep in mind that this was our baseline year for a newly consolidated district. So twenty-twenty-three is what's considered as our baseline data year. So we've nowhere to go but up, hopefully from here. And we have every, every bit of that, that is the direction that we're headed in. I would like to recognize all of our principals, assistant principals, and faculty and staff, and our parents, who worked very hard in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three because before I present all of this data, I like to look at the positives and start off with the positives. But from twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year to the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year, every single one of our schools showed growth in more than one area, and that's a positive. And so our students were seeing growth in their scores. They didn't jump from here to here overnight. It took time for them to get where they are, and it's going to take time for us to get them where we want them to be. So, but I wanted to commend our, our school administrators and all of our teachers and faculty and staff, all the hard work that they're doing to try to help our students improve, and not just a report card rating, but actually help our students improve in their own personal successes. So with that, now I'll jump right in to everything that I've got to cover. So you have in your packet tonight a copy of the district's school report card, and on top of that report card, I did a two-page summary because the report card itself just shows you a snapshot of twenty-twenty-three and all of those cut scores. But what I did was I wanted to give you, like I said, you know, data trends is a better measure across multiple years. And in research, you want at least a three-year data trend to actually to establish whether you have an overall improving growth trend or decreasing growth trend. So I wanted to give you a three-year snapshot of the district's report card. So what I had to, what I had to do was go back in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty, and twenty-one, and twenty-one, twenty-two school years, and actually combine Van Buren School District One and Van Buren School District Two, because you do remember, we were two separate districts. So took some doing, but we got it done. I had three other individuals who are statisticians in our district check behind me to make sure my numbers are right, or presented them to you guys tonight, so I feel pretty confident the numbers that I lay in front of y'all are right. So in our ELA South Carolina Ready scores, if you look at from twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year to this past school year, we increased grades three through eight ELA from twenty-eight point eight to percent to thirty-seven percent. In math, we saw grades from twenty-one point six percent to twenty-five point six percent. As far as our in-a-course score, C or better, you heard Dr. Simmons mention, you have to score seventy above, that equates to a C or better. In English Two, slight decrease, but not much. We dropped from forty-nine point six to forty-eight point three. And in Algebra, we did see a decline, forty-one point five percent to thirty-five point seven percent. But I would like to say that that is also in line with the state's trend for Algebra E O Cs. Their trend too is also in that same declining track. Prepared for Success, South Carolina Pass, this is science. From twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one to last school year, stayed about the same. And again, that's right on track with the state trends for students in science. We'll say that last year, they adopted new standards in science across every grade level. I'm sure, I don't know if any of you have had an opportunity to look at the science standards, and I'm sure you probably haven't had a chance to see the science tests across the grade levels and the E O C. It is very difficult, and it is showing not only in our district, but across this entire state. You also heard Dr. Simmons say that some of our colleagues in districts surrounding us are in the same boat that we're in. I can promise y'all that I compared our district to all of the five surrounding districts to us, and we are performing at a trend equal to or a little bit better than those surrounding us. So we're not in this boat alone. As far as, same, right along with science, you see the biology scores there, saw a drastic decrease in biology E O Cs, but on a high note, as Dr. Simmons mentioned in Denmark Ole High School, and as you heard Mr. Smith mention in Beatty High School, good news is in U.S. History, we fought that battle for a long time, but finally, we are seeing the fruits of our labors. We have gone up from nineteen point eight percent to over twenty-six percent scores C or better. So we hope to improve our trend in science, but we're starting to improve that in U.S. History. On the second page, you'll really see where we're starting to show some gains, and that's at our earlier grades. Academic readiness and on-track for success, this is measured by the K R, K R A assessments in kindergarten, and of course, you see this first and second grade scores there, but you can see the drastic gains that we've shown since twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. On K R A, we went from ten point one percent to twenty-five point, twenty-five percent this past school year. Second grade from fifty-eight point two percent up to eighty-six percent, showing readiness. In ELA, and in math, from sixty point nine percent to eighty-nine point seven percent in math. First grade students who are on track for success in ELA, gone from seventy-nine point nine percent to ninety-one point three percent for twenty-twenty-three. And first grade on-track success in math from twenty-twenty, eighty-five point one percent to ninety-three point seven percent this past school year. Also, very proud to say, our graduation rate in our district is higher than the state average. This has been a trend for us, and we're continuing on that trend, and our goal is by next year to have that closer to ninety percent. Annual dropout rate, we did see a slight increase in that. I would like to say that because we are so small, one to two students raises that percentage rate. So when we, when we look at it in whole numbers, it was just a couple of students more, but of course, that drove our percentage rate from a one point six in twenty-twenty, twenty-one school year. We are now at a two point four percent, but we've already looking at the data for twenty-three, twenty-four, and we hope to see that number sort of follow in some. And our college and career readiness, we also saw gains in that from the twenty-twenty, twenty-one school years, thirty-nine point nine percent. For twenty-two, twenty-three, that jumped to fifty-eight point two percent. So, you know, we started over a year ago recognizing some weaknesses and implementing some changes last year. The board was part of those discussions, and some of the things that we were implementing, a modified school calendar was one thing, you know, trying to increase the amount of instructional time, particularly for our struggling learners. But also, we've increased our professional development for not just teachers and staff, but also all administrators. You heard a couple of them mention that tonight. We're strengthening our partnership with parents and community members to offer just a complete support system for our students, to let them know that we're all in this together and supporting them. We've also undertaken the task of reviewing all of our curriculum, teaching methodologies, and assessment practices because, I believe it was Dr. Simmons mentioned assessments. Assessment is just as critical as instruction that's going on in the classroom. And if you're not assessing students correctly, and you're not aligning your assessments up to state testing, then you're setting our students up for failure and not being prepared for how to take those tests, making sure that they're all aligned to our state standards. We're continuing our recruitment efforts and getting qualified, experienced teachers to fill our vacancies. We've also revamped our curriculum teams and reorganized those to include teachers and administrators and experts that we're contracting with to come in and help with that. You heard a couple of the administrators mention tonight about our MTSS experts. We've, we've contracted with a couple of those to come in and give some PD to our staff and curriculum teams. We're continuing our C T E focus on K courses, you know, us having an in-house welding program now. Our new cosmetology building will be open by the start of next school year. We brought a nursing program home this past, or year before last. All of those are in efforts to improve our college and career readiness scores, and that's beginning to pay off for us. Also, we are in the throes of writing our school renewal and district strategic plans because all of this is tied together with our Read to Succeed reading plan, our A T S I and C S I designation plans that I spoke about a couple of board meetings ago, and now our strategic plans will all be aligned to this baseline report card that we've gotten for twenty-twenty-three. And, and also, we've increased and focused on school safety measures because, as you heard tonight, and as you see in all these school report cards, these school surveys for parents and students, and their take on school climate and how they, do they feel safe at school, do they feel secure at school, do they feel supported? That's important. That's factored into our school report cards and our district ratings. So we've increased our safety measures to try to tackle that, and as you heard, some of the responses greatly improved this year as a result of some of the safety measures that I feel like we've taken. So I want to thank the board again, again, for all your support and all the measures that we're trying to take to tackle these challenges that we're seeing in our school report cards, and continuing our efforts to improve these scores and our student outcomes. With that being said, out with the old, and in with the new. Twenty-twenty-three is the last school report card that you will see with schools and districts getting a rating as it did. Beginning is school year twenty-four, twenty-five. South Carolina has adopted a new school report card, and you heard me mention it a couple of board meetings ago. It is going to be based on median or average value growth for students, and also based on average growth targets for students. And in your board packet, I included, Ms. First, you asked this question earlier, I included a PowerPoint slides that explains this. What it means is that for all students in grades four through eight for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, the state has looked at every individual student, and they've done a three-year data analysis on those students, and they've come up with an average growth target for each individual student, for the district to get, or that student to get one point. And then they've come up with an added value target that if that student scores higher than what they need to score to get one point, they'll get extra points, although they haven't told us what those extra points would be. But I'm sharing this with the board tonight because next year, all of our report cards will be based primarily off of this model. So So it's no longer just a meets or exceeds kind of score that a child did. It's, did they improve? Did they grow? Did they score better than they did the year before in this subject area? Does that make sense? I'm trying to order it down as simple as I can get it. But I did give you a copy of the State Department of Education's PowerPoint that was given to superintendents and principals. Starting in 2024, the new high school student success indicator. It's HSSSI. It's the acronym. The new HSSSI will be worth 12 points out of the 100-point rating scales for high school report cards. This indicator will include on-track-to-graduate metrics and five-year student success rates. Also, the new added value growth model for students in grades four through eight. They will have two individualized growth targets based on prior year scores, which I just explained. The median annual target, which is, we call it the MAT score or the MAT value, and the added value target or ABT score. If a student meets the MAT, they will get one point for the district. Meeting the ABT is worth more points based on the size and state of gains. And again, we do not know what that will go to, two points, three or four. Partial points are available when scores fall between the MAT and the ABT. And if a school has a high proportion of students meeting the ABTs, this school receives a favorable student progress rating. And this last five pages goes into further detail that explains, and it gives you an example with, what does this look like? Okay? And it gives you, let's get to... I think it's the third page back. Using the MAT and ABT lookup tables. So it actually supplied this school districts, principals, and teachers with a table that you can actually look at this year's student scores and look up what that student's ABT and MAT score needs to be for 2024 in order for that student to get points or to show growth. So this is the type of data that our teachers, our data teams, and our administrators are using for student conferences right now and using to help better prepare students for the upcoming test. Because we already know what every individual student needs to score next year in order to get credit for growth. Lots of information. I don't want to try not to overreact, but as far as to answer your question, I hope that these PowerPoint slides that I've included better answers that question.
Can you speak about this at a conference a few years ago? I have a question. Are you still in Power School?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
And you're going to come in here?
Yes, ma'am, as far as I know. Have you gotten any word about Power School going like? Okay. So this year for 2023, the growth for the school district and schools was reported. Does it print out on the report card? But it is reported on the State Department website. But next year, it will drive our report cards.
Quick question. Under the financial data for the district and for all the schools, we only had like three items listed out of all those categories. Now, I can understand, since we're a new school district, there wasn't anything from, you know, change from the previous year, I'm assuming. But like the percent of expenditures for instruction, a percent of expenditures for teacher salaries? I notice there wasn't anything in there where most of all the other districts had that information. I just thought it'd be an interesting comparison, you know, where our district compares to other districts.
Yep. What page are you on?
The very last page on the financial data.
Twenty-five.
On the local report card, I'm sorry.
I think on your report, the district report has just got the three items that we had information on. But if you look at all the school reports...
That's right. That's because we were two different school districts. So on the district report card, they didn't factor it in as a combined district. But if you would like, I could get Devon to calculate that for a combined district for comparison, if the board would like that.
But I just thought it'd be interesting, because all the other school districts, I think, had that listed in their report, and that was brought to my attention.
Okay. Not a problem. We'll get that to you. All right. Also, in your board packets, there is a memo from the State Department of Education. Now that you've heard about all of our school report cards on October 18th, 2023, because we did have three schools in the district that scored below average, that equates to an underperforming school designation. And therefore, we are required to publicly report that. DeMarcola High School, DeMarcola Middle School, and DeMarcola Elementary School, because they all scored below average on the school report cards. There are some extra things that we are having to do. You heard all the principals tonight go through the report cards and tell you the things and what we're working on. But we are also required to have public meetings to go over our report cards with the community. Those have already been scheduled. We start tomorrow afternoon with DeMarcola Elementary and Middle School. And I believe DeMarcola High School's public meeting is the following Thursday. Any questions about that? And with the board meetings tonight, we have met the requirement to publicly report this through our board meetings. As far as the district is concerned.
May I ask a question? I remember there was some concern that we had some schools in the past were... I think you mentioned the initials that they called, I forgot, but they still have that designation? And if it affects...
I'm sorry, repeat them again?
I think I remember hearing something about, well, I think this is what made me think, the chronically underperforming school. Is that where you were underperforming for like a few years and the lower?
No, none of our schools have reached that status yet.
And we had that a few years back?
I do not know. It would have been way before me, so I don't know. We would have been two separate districts. I don't know. That answer is...
Thank you.
Any other questions? All these tests and all these things. Well, literally, the State Department has full-time statisticians that come up with all these formulas, so...
If they been in the school business.
Now, the test?
If they been in the classroom, if they been in administration.
Any questions?
Can you let the board know what time the meetings are scheduled for tomorrow? That was one of the questions from one of our board members.
Yes, ma'am. It's 5:00 p.m. tomorrow, starting at 5 o'clock for DeMarcola Elementary and Middle School. And on Thursday evening for DeMarcola High School. Dr. Simmons, the doors is 5:00 p.m. as well, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And DeMarcola Elementary and Middle will both present tomorrow evening back to back. All right. So also, again, as far as school report cards, and because we talked about the growth model, again, focusing on the positives, I did include in your packet, State Department website has a link to go to find our growth reports for each individual school and for our district. And if you look at the stack, I gave you one for each school and for the district on top. And if you look at our growth, we are more in line with the state averages, which is very promising. Everybody see what I'm talking about? So if you look at our points arm, the district was 50.2%, where the state was 51.2. If you look at our lowest-performing 20% of students, the district was 50.9%, the state was 51.2. And if you're looking at our students meeting the added value model, the district was 34.5%, the state was 39.8. So, and then I've given you a copy of each of the schools where you can look at the growth model. How much did our students grow? And that looks much more promising than just looking at a report cards rating. So moving on from the school report cards to our enrollment trend. And as you can see, as of October 30th, 2023, our enrollment is down slightly from last month, from 1772 to 1765. Can I cut that one page? All right. Also, I would like to bring to the board's attention tonight, the BLC 2.0 is the Board Legislative Contact. South Carolina School Board Association is rebooting its Board Legislative Contact, or BLC. And all local school boards are asked to appoint a BLC, which is a contact person, and provide the South Carolina School Board Association with the person's name by January 30th, 2024. The person nominated by our school board will work by proactively supporting or opposing legislation and responding in a timely manner to matters before the General Assembly. They will be attending training and seminars on various legislative issues, including the South Carolina School Board Association's Legislative Advocacy Conference. They'll be providing monthly reports to the board regarding pending bills and legislation during the legislative session and working with district administrators and board members on advocacy issues. So I'm asking the board tonight to please nominate a member of our board to serve on the BLC 2.0, so Jessica can submit that information.
All right. You've heard the information that's come from what Dr. Brown has informed us. I know that that person has to be someone that is, first of all, that's in tune and definitely has the time. Out of all the board members, I do know that Ms. Bonaparte has a very good rapport with all of the individuals down at the State Department, as well as those for South Carolina School Board Association. So I would like for the board, if you all are in agreement and have no problem, I'd like that to be the recommendation and that we vote on that.
We need a motion.
Yeah.
I move to nominate Ms. Bonaparte as our legislative representative.
All right. We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. The motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Bonaparte. You got your hands full. Thank you very much. But we know you'll do a good job. You have a really good rapport with the School Board Association. And I know that you'll bring back all the information. Keep the stuff safe.
All right. All right. Before moving on to the next item on agenda, I do want to report to the board. Speaking of legislators, as you may recall, our House Representative, Mr. Justin Van Buren, was able to secure some additional funding for a consolidated district in the amount of $5 million. We, Devon, has worked tirelessly with the legislation, legislators, the county, and also Mr. Bob Dameron. That's not as simple as them just mailing us a check. I have learned that issue. Does it happen that way? It's a very lengthy process that the county and the school district has to go through in order to receive those funds. But the funds are here. So as promised, Devon...
Second reading of this policy, JLCDB.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the second reading of policy, JLCDB.
One second. We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. The motion carries. We are down to item number nine, which is the first reading of a new policy for Van Buren County School District, which is policy, GBE. Be Gavin's Law.
Yes, ma'am. And on top of this policy, I also included a State Department memo and also the legislation that is driving this new policy. It is legislative bill A54R82 to A3583. This bill is written, as it's called, as Aaron's Law. Aaron's Law is a bill that was presented and passed. It can become part of Gavin's Law. Gavin's Law is where we have to have the comprehensive health curriculum in our schools. But also now, we have to incorporate Aaron's Law. This new statute was passed as part of this sex extortion that is happening with both staff and students concerning social media. So I present to you tonight, as a result of this legislation being passed, that school districts must adopt this and incorporate it as part of Gavin's Law, policy, GBE, GBE, Gavin's Law Sexual Extortion for Staff. And I offer it tonight for first reading.
All right. With the board's pleasure.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the first reading of policy, GBE.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. And the motion carries. We are moving down to item number 10, which is the first reading of Van Buren County School District new policy, section J, which is JICFB, Gavin's Law Sexual Extortion for Students.
Yes, ma'am. And as I previously explained, there is a new policy for both staff and students. And just to get a little more specific, this policy concerns incorporating Aaron's Law, which requires the district to provide curriculum and age-appropriate instruction on the dangers and consequences of sexual extortion. So I'll present to you for first reading, policy, JICFB, Gavin's Law Sexual Extortion for Students.
With the pleasure of the board.
I think that we accept the first reading.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. And the motion carries. We are now down to item number 11, which is approval of the 2024 board calendar. You have this information in front of you. You've had an opportunity to review it. But before we entertain a motion, I noticed that we have some asterisks that are highlighted that says "off schedule." And if you could just remind us what some of these, what they are? I mean, some of them I can figure out, but if you could just go through that.
Yes, ma'am. And as you know, when there's a major holiday, for instance, in January, the first Monday of January falls on January 1st, which is New Year's holiday. So Jessica drafted a calendar to be the very next Monday. So all the following dates, April 8th, April 1st. I forgot now what's in April. Jessica raised that date.
April 4th?
April... There is a holiday, so we moved that to April the 8th. I believe it's Memorial Day, filed that first spring holiday. What is the reason for April? Spring break?
Spring break.
Okay. And then July 8th, the first Monday, would have been the July 4th holiday break. And of course, September, that's our Labor Day break. So these asterisks, we're moving that up when we, due to a holiday being our typical meeting Monday.
Okay, I'm just making notes. Okay. Everybody good with these states and the explanations?
Yep.
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the proposed calendar for the school district for the year from January 24th, 2024 to December 25th.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. And the motion carries. So this is the proposed 2024 board calendar that we're going to run with. We do understand that, you know, sometimes things do happen and... We do understand that, you know, sometimes things do happen and, you know, changes can occur, but as it stands, we have this to guide us with for two thousand twenty-four. All right, next on the agenda is item number twelve, which is discussion of use of tennis courts and reconditioning fees. And Dr. Brown, you can enlighten us a little bit more, I know you had mentioned this before, but-
Yes, ma'am. So a few weeks ago, I had a requested meeting with Mayor Nancy Foster concerning the tennis courts and updating the tennis courts in the city of Banburg. As the board knows, we use those tennis courts for our B.E. Red Raider tennis team. The last time they reconditioned the tennis courts, I had to do some research on this. I had to go to Devon to find out how this was handled before. And in looking back in previous records, when the cost came, the city, the school district agreed to split the cost with the city for reconditioning of those tennis courts in order to allow our high school tennis team to continue using those courts. So I bring to you tonight, it is time for this tennis courts to have some updates again. So the city received this invoice from the company for thirty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars, and Mayor Foster met with me and asked me to please consider helping with this invoice. So I bring to the board tonight to ask the board to please vote on and provide you with directives.
The city, and they still will want-
Not to my knowledge, but Mr. Williams, our athletic director, is here tonight. Mr. Williams, has there been any problems with that?
None, and we get them whenever we want them.
I mean, I think it's reasonable to split the costs. I mean, considering our Tennessee, I know some of the teams that travel to us, I know from Orangeburg, they have to travel all the way to Columbia to play their own matches. So, you know, if you split that up over, you know, five years, when's the last time we had it resurfaced? You remember, years ago?
Do you remember a date?
Three years ago?
It's been four years.
Four years ago, okay. So-
I don't really have a problem with it. What I have a problem with is the lump sum and it's not broken down. That's where I have the problem. I, I'm, I'm, I think it's something that we need to do. We've done it in the past, and I get that, and I understand that. And I understand that they're asking for us to pay half of that, and they've given us items one through eight, what is entailed in the thirty-two thousand seven four seven, but I don't know how they came up with that amount. And this is just my thoughts, board members. I will do what you all agree to do, but it would be nice to know how they arrived at that amount. I see that they broke it down by the things that they're gonna do, but I don't know how much it's gonna cost. I mean, how do you come up with thirty-two thousand seven four seven?
So what you'd like to see is an itemized bill?
Well, I think it's just a lump, it's a lump sum quote from Tenneco-
Right.
-of Columbia, who's, I guess, that's the, they do-
Use for-
-resurface courts, but we have to do-
Excuse me, would you be required to get more than one quote?
That's something the city should probably have done. I don't know whether or not they did, I don't know.
Maybe this is their suggestion.
I have no idea. I have no idea.
Go ahead. So is there, are you able to tell us, I guess, what we paid previously for, I mean, to participate with helping with this type of update? And I guess also-
Ms. Ackles, when you said what we paid previously, are you asking about the amount? Or are you asking what percentage did the district pay?
No, so the amount, the amount that we previously paid for any updates on the tennis court.
Ms. Burr, when you pulled that information, do you remember the amount that was paid when we, when we paid the city?
I just remember we helped. It was done, the last time the district contributed was when they did a major overhaul, which was when, before Al Ramsey passed away, so y'all know how long ago that's been. So we helped then, we did not help at the last one. Because at that point, I don't think we had, our Tennessee wasn't very active at that point, was it? So we didn't help at the last one. We helped when Al Ramsey was the tennis coach. And so costs have changed a lot since he was, was here.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
So we didn't help the city as long as we weren't using the courts. We didn't help the city with the court payments.
Yeah, I think the last time they were upgraded, they were done locally. It wasn't by professional resurfacing. I think it was just some, they kind of did it on their own.
And we didn't help with that.
Yeah. It should be a lot more durable here.
Yes.
But the time before, Ms. Burr, it was the district paid half of what that cost was.
Right, we did, yes, we did slip the cost.
That's a good question. The question, Devon, was do we have the money in the budget to do this? When are they looking at doing this? And I apologize if, well, no, I'm not gonna apologize. And the reason why I'm not gonna apologize is because it's the taxpayers' money. I don't have a problem with paying for half. I think we should do that. We've done it in the past, we utilize the courts. But I would like to see an itemization of how you arrive at a lump sum. That's, I just have a problem with the, you just-
I don't think so.
I'd like to have an itemization so that we can see what this looks like.
It would be paid from your bond, like, you know, we issued that schedule, general location bond each year. It would have to be paid for out of there.
Okay.
All right, so what I'll do is I'll ask Devon to get in touch with the city clerk, Ms. Robin Chavis, and ask if they can reach back out to this bidder that gave them this quote and do a more itemized quote. Now they write in the speaker, I don't-
Does anybody else have a problem with that? If not, then we'll just table this and put it on their calendar for next month, and I would imagine that they would have an itemization by then in December. Okay. I'm sorry? Yes?
Well, you thought just saying that's a district, don't we have to get a few quotes?
I'll turn it over to Dr. Brown.
Under our procurement policy, yes, if it's a certain amount, we do, that's what we do.
So would you think we might ask them if we get a few quotes in this, like, the best one? That way we would know that we had-
We can, again, when Devon calls in for an itemized quote from Robin Chavis, I'll ask her to ask that question. Believe me, this is the city, so whatever their procurement policies are, would have been, I would assume what they did. I don't know that, but-
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what the city's policies are of him, but I do know that I would like to see an itemization before-
But we will ask, I think.
Are we all comfortable on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, down to number thirteen, which is the monthly financial report. Now I'll turn it over to Devon Burr.
Evening. All right, I've put on your table a copy of that five million dollar check, along with the paperwork that had to be completed, the work for us to get the money. And then a couple weeks ago, I had to actually sit in a committee meeting with legislators and watch the process of how they approved things. Long day, pretty stressful. Anyway, on the last page, if you will look, it breaks it out by county. This is the SRS litigation money, and the legislators took the part of money and divided it out upon, around the county. So our five million, when I originally asked for it, I asked for it as the school district. Then I found out I could not request it as the school district because the school district was not getting the money, Banburg County was getting the money. So then we had to go back to the table, redo the paperwork, to get the county to request the money versus the school district to request the money. So we did that, went back to the county administrator, he signed it, we sent it back up, and they approved it at their meeting, gave us the five million. I am now working with Bob Dameron, Rainhauser, which I think I've all met. And then we have to take this money and put it in another account so that we can make the bond. So that's all being worked on as we speak. So I'll let y'all know when that's done. This will not reduce the millage for this current year because the tax bills had to go out before the money got here.
Right.
And nobody, I talked to the county auditor, because as y'all know, we don't set our operating millage anymore than the State Department of Revenue does. For Von Millage, Bob Dameron always lets us know, but they did not feel comfortable doing anything with the millage without having the money in hand. So we did not change, we, it did drop a little bit this year. It went from one oh nine, I think, to one oh three. So it did drop some, so taxpayers should see, it's not really an extreme drop in your taxes, but you should see a little drop in your taxes this year. And then we will regroup, now that the money's officially here, we will regroup for the next tax year.
Next tax season, okay.
And I will let y'all know, Bob Dameron has agreed, and if you need him to come back, he will come back and explain exactly what we're gonna do from that point on.
Okay, great.
Quick question, is this a one-time, you know, settlement, litigation settlement? Part of money that's out there, so once that's all gone, it's gone.
Yes. And if you see how it was digged out-
Yeah. Well, we got short enders too.
Yeah, we did, but, you know, at least we got some of them.
Yeah.
Not complaining, but yeah, it's, sometimes it's hard to look at what other people get in comparison to yourself, when you're just in that same kind of area, so. But yes, at least we got some money. And our money was set to reduce bond debt, so we have no option on what we'll do with the money. You're hard for that. Yes, ma'am?
My reading is correct. Ms. Burr, Banburg County Crossroads Industrial Park also receives-
Four million.
Four million, yes, ma'am. So that's nine million to Banburg County.
Yes, ma'am, nine million to Banburg County. The county got four, and the school got five. And I think therefore, don't hold me to this, I think therefore is to build another one of those state buildings out in the industrial park. But don't hold me to that, I would, but that's what that place is called.
All right.
Great, you also have your financial reports in your packet. We are working on our fiscal year audit at this time. We'll, they're here, they were here last week, and they'll be back midweek this, this, this week. And we will have our audit submitted by December versus the State Department.
All right, so with regards to the monthly financial report, board members, you've had an opportunity to receive and review the report prior to tonight's meeting. What is the pleasure of the board with regard to the monthly financial report? All right. We have a motion on the floor in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor, please signal by saying aye. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We are now- I'm sorry, go ahead.
Also, today, I went to Walter's Ver with Ms. Alice Johnson, the county treasurer. Just wanted y'all to know that we're working with USDA. We've had some issues since consolidation. Problem is, neither one of us were a part of that USDA movement that happened. For the last two years, we have not received an invoice, and we've had to keep emailing back and forth to figure out how to get an invoice. We finally get the invoice after the due date of the bond payment. But we went down and actually sat down with the USDA today to try to get all this rectified, to figure out how we can get, you know, how we can get the information in a more timely manner. So we are working with USDA on some issues as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so item number fourteen is visitors' comments, and I don't see that anyone signed up for visitors' comments. So we'll move on to item number fifteen, which is executive session. What is the pleasure of the board with regard to executive session?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we be open session and go into executive session for the following nine items. Detroit, employment personnel, one. Two, discussions. B, actually, executive session.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor of going into executive session, please signal by saying aye. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, we will now move into executive session to discuss, A, employment personnel, number one, personnel recommendations for hire, number two, personnel recommendations for resignation, and B, discussion of student, release of students. We're now moving into executive session. We'd like to thank everyone for coming. Your-
Okay, board members, I will entertain the motion from out of executive section. We have a motion from out of executive session. It's an open session and we have a second. Any discussion? Here are none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. The motion carries and we are now down to item number 16, which is action on executive session items if needed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the student transfer request for students B, A, B, C, and D.
All right. Motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? Here are none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. The motion carries and we are now down to item number 17, which is to adjourn the meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
I know, Chair. That's needed that we can adjourn the meeting.
All right. We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Here are none. If you're in favor of adjourned this meeting, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. The motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.[1793.15][1793.15](applause)